All right, board members. Board members, please come to the table. We're about 45 minutes behind, but perhaps we can make up time? I don't know. Are we? Wait. Yes, we are. We're 45 minutes behind. All right. And guess what? We're seeing some of the same faces here. Ms. Michael, are you leading again? Or you are leading again. All right. Ms. Michael, I will turn over fiscal forecast to you. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to present the fiscal forecast this afternoon. Each year in September, we present a preliminary fiscal forecast.
If I could just interrupt one minute, I wanted to recognize the fact that we have school board member Toby Sorensen from Falls Church and I'm sorry. Oh, yes, City, excuse me, and Phyllis Pajardo, superintendent. Welcome. Thank you.
So, thank you so much for the opportunity this afternoon to present our preliminary fiscal forecast. Each September, we present a fiscal forecast for the upcoming fiscal year as well as the four outgoing out-years. Then, based on activities in the fall, we update our fiscal forecasts and they're shared jointly at a meeting between the Board of Supervisors and School Board in November. So, this is really that preliminary process. And we posted for today a one-page summary as well. I was going to make a few comments and then I'll go directly to the slides versus going through every single slide in the presentation, again, to recognize trying to be efficient in terms of the board's time here together today and leaving time for questions. When we look at our FY '19 fiscal forecast, our focus is compensating our teachers now. Employee compensation will remain the division-wide priority and increasing our salaries to the market average will require substantial resources as we look forward. Without future revenue increases, though, we will not be able to address our compensation needs and sustain the quality and the full range of the programs that we offer. So, just a little bit on the '19 projected expenditures first, then we'll go through some slides and I'll walk them through in more detail. So, when we look at our, whoops. Sorry, as I jump to a different slide. When we look at our budget and our fiscal forecast for FY '19, I first wanted to go through and talk about compensation. So, when we look at our compensation study, right, our teacher salary scale was implemented in this current fiscal year, FY '18, to address faster career earnings and market competitive salary ranges. And our goal was to target our salaries between 95% and 105% of market average. So, if we look first at our FY '16 salary scale, this is what our salary scale looked like in FY '16, prior to when we started our compensation study at all. So, when we look at this graphic, you can see that we had a substantial sag in that salary scale line. So, our goal was to begin to address that line. Looking to the right slide. So, when you look at FY '17, in FY '17, we made a $40 million investment in teacher salaries. And you can see that the red line on this graph shows that $40 million investment in teacher salaries, right? And we targeted that investment to where we had the greatest gap, right? So, when we look at this slide, you can see how we changed the slope of that line by adding that $40 million in FY '17. So, on the next slide, what we're doing is we're adding the impact of FY '18. So, just as we talked about in our resource stewardship presentation today, again, you can see at the very bottom, that green line, which was FY '16, and the red line that was FY '17. And now, you can see our FY '18 salary scale, including that investment of 26.6 million that was added to the slide. That's the yellow line, right? Since then, we've also updated the FY '18 market average. That's the blue line on the slide. So, you can see even with the investment that we've made in FY '18, we're still behind that market average. Okay? So, the last question regarding this is on the next slide, Slide 11. We frequently get questions about, are we trying to get our teacher salaries to the top salaries in this region, right? And this slide shows in FY '18, in the red and the light green lines, two of our comparator districts and their salary scales for FY '18, right? So, you can see that we're trying to get to the market average, which is the blue line on this chart, and not the red and green lines, which were those comparator districts. So, when we look on Slide 12, at our FY '19 salary scale investment, right, in our fiscal forecast, we're including funding of 53.1 million to continue to advance our teacher salaries and pay our teachers now. This is half of that remaining investment that we need to get to the market average, right? So, we're making that investment in our fiscal forecast. And the other funding we have is $5 million to implement our other salary scales that we didn't implement last year. So, that included the unified salary scale. And when we developed that unified salary scale, as many of you will remember, we didn't include a market scale adjustment when we developed that slide. So, we'll also include funding for that market scale adjustment. So, on Slide 13, this shows on the dashed line what the investment of that $53 million included in our FY '19 forecast will do as compared to our FY '18 scale. So, you can see the increase that that would make. On the next line, we've added where we project the market average to be in FY '19. And that's, again, a dashed line because it's forecasted. So, you'll see on all of these slides, the numbers that are actuals are in solid colored and the dashed lines are the forecasted. So, then finally, when we look at where we want to be when we fully implement our future salary scale, you'll see our future salary scale is on this slide in a dashed purple color, right? And our projected market average on there is also dashed as well. So, you can see when our salary scale is fully implemented, that we'll be above the market average early in a teacher's career. And then, at the end of a teacher's career, we'll be below that market average with the goal of having our salaries be at, in this case, to 100% of the market average over the course of a teacher's career. So, now, I want to go back and I'll just briefly go through the cost of each of these things. So, I'm going to return to Slide 5. So, in addition to the investments that we're making in terms of our teacher salary scale and FY '19's fiscal forecast, we also have to deal with required expenditures that we have. The first, which we have every single year, is increases in student enrollment growth, right? This is a forecast of an increase of 1,000 students, right? This is a soft estimate. We don't yet have our final enrollment numbers for this fall, but projecting growth of 1,000 students would require an increase of 9.2 million. Now, as we do every fall, after we have our actual numbers for September 30th, we will re-forecast all of our enrollment projections and use that for the proposed budget. We also have contractual increases of 2.3 million and then some required compensation adjustments. The first is, as part of the year-end budget review, an additional step was added on the bachelor's degree salary lanes, right, and funded with one-time money for FY '18. So, we need to include the recurring cost of that adjustment from year-end. That's 1.3 million. And then, we also have health insurance increases of 13.4 million. That's a projected increase of 5.5%, which is below the national trend. When we look at our retirement cost increases, we've had some significant retirement cost increases in the most recent years. We currently do not have a forecasted increase for retirement for the Virginia Retirement System or ERFC, our supplementary system. Now, we're waiting to see where those state numbers will be. The state will give us the actual numbers for VRS, but we're hopeful by getting to 100% of the actuarial rate and with positive investment returns, that unless they're smoothing losses from an extended period of time or updating their mortality tables, that we won't see a significant increase there. So, when we look at the required expenditure increases, they're 27.7 million. And then, all of the salary increases that we just discussed will total 87.3 million. So, first, we have a step increase for all of our eligible employees. That's 44.9 million. Next, we have that investment to the teacher salary scale of 53.1 million. Again, that's closing the gap that we had remaining by half, so making a significant investment to pay our teachers now. We have a placeholder. We'll come back to the board later this fall with options to address our grandfathered employees as the board requested. So, currently, we have a placeholder for $1 million, but we will be bringing those options back to the board. We have the remaining salary scale implementations of $5 million. And then, there's that line for the market rate adjustment or the market scale adjustment to those new scales that were developed prior to that being incorporated. And then, as we do each year, we have base savings. So, the net of all of those is 83.3 million, oh, 87.3. So, in conclusion, when we jump to the summary slide on Slide 17, the required expenditure adjustments that we just covered were 27.1. Our projected compensation needs were 87.3. We have some small adjustments to transfers and reserves primarily due to our construction projects and our CIP, and additional funding required for our grant match for FISAP. All of those expenditure items together total 113.5 million. So, when we look at funding those, on the top, you can see our total funds available line, that increase of 15.3 million. When we look at our projected revenue increases for next year, we're projecting an increase in state funding for state aid as well as sales tax. And both of those will be offset by a decrease in our beginning balance funding. So, prior to assuming any change in funding from the county, we're looking at a net revenue increase of 15.3 million. So, when you take the revenue available and all of those expenditures that we just talked about, you can see it leaves us for FY '19 with a projected gap of 98.2 million. So, when we think about that, each 1% increase in the county transfer is about 19.7 million. So, again, this is really our preliminary fiscal forecast for FY '19. You can see in this forecast, the only investments that we're making are in compensation, right? So, we've deferred any other required increases or needed increases for infrastructure and other instructional programs.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Ms. McGlock.
So, I appreciate looking at the various slides where you gave us the teacher salary scale, master's lanes, graphs. The question I have is because I think both sets of data are important, but this is something that, Dr. Brae-Brown, we have been, some of us on the board keep saying over and over again to Dr. Garza when she first did this, the key statement as opening in this presentation is our compensation study. But the charts keep saying salary. So, it's the teacher salary scale. And thing is, if you start looking at where all the lines are, because Fairfax County is unique compared to surrounding jurisdictions, we have the ERFC as part of our total compensation. It's a benefit. It also has, comes at a cost. You have to add those in when you're trying to compare our teacher compensation to other surrounding jurisdictions because otherwise, as some of us had been asking the teacher community is, if you want a higher salary to match some of the other surrounding jurisdictions, you could certainly take the funds that FCPS pays into an ERFC, which is an added retirement benefit, and you can have that money in your paycheck. And so, to staff, we've been talking about this. If we're struggling to figure out how to close the salary gaps, but we also want to be able to provide salary increases to our employees each year, whether it's cost of living, whether it's step, all the money's competing against each other because that's where the biggest dollars are, when you've got 85% of more of your funding go into compensation. So, I guess my question is, why are we not having these teacher salary scale graphs showing the total compensation comparable to the other school divisions? Because there has, we have received input from the community who go ahead and do it and they do the overlay, and they said, when you add in the other benefits we give our employees, taking ERFC as one of them, we're already matching the region. I don't know that to be true, but I don't even have a graph to be able to show me that. But even Ms. Michael showed us in one of the, one of the last graphs, you know, where we're going to be, we're going to be at 105% or whatever, 100.
Yeah. On Slide 16, we're going to be at 100% in terms of our salary comparison.
Right.
So, if we add the employer cost of ERFC, which is really the only differentiating benefit as compared to the other jurisdictions, right, that would add 4%, right, overall. So, we would still be within our target range of 95% to 105% once this is fully implemented.
Right. So, if we're at 100, you add in ERFC, now we're at 104. And my point is, in a system where you're now looking at the, what was the number, $98 million, that we may have a gap for the board supervisors and our employees, some have had to forego getting a full step because we've said, sorry, we needed to put 30, 40 million into our teacher salary lanes. But if you add in ERFC, we might say, guess what, teachers? Good news. We've closed, closed the gap with our total compensation between you and the other jurisdictions. And now, we can give the step increases and/or the MSAs to maybe you and/or all the other employees who are deserving of it.
I just. That comparison that I just made in terms of getting to that 100% of the market average, we will get there when we fully implement that future scale, which we're assuming will be in fiscal year 2021. So, we're still trying to work to that future scale. So, you are absolutely correct that when you take the 100% of that scale and add the 4% benefits, that we would be at 104%. But I just wanted to be clear that those numbers I was talking about was the future scale.
That's fine, but there was another salary where you, another chart where you were showing, I think it was the gap sort of mid-career. If you go back a couple of graphs, keep going. Got to be one more. Do you know which one I'm talking about? You had the numbers in between the lines that said, this is our gap and this is what we're going to need, right there. Okay.
This was the investment we made in FY '17. Kind of showing you where our '16 scale went.
So, you could use that chart as a visual to then go forward to like where we are. Why aren't we?
So, right there is the FY '18.
Well, you should have those arrows. So, you're saying that, that you, it might help to have the arrows in there saying, well, you've got the 26.6 million and a 40 million?
So, this yellow line right there is the FY '18 scale with the 26.6 million already invested for this fiscal year. The top blue line, just the salary alone, is the market average for FY '18. So, we still do have a gap between our current scale in '18 to the '18 market.
So, what I was saying, Ms. Quinn, is it would be helpful, since I should do the other one, you end up saying between the yellow line and the blue line, how many millions of dollars are we talking about that it would cost to narrow those? But also, if you run a second set of graphs that adds ERFC, employer contribution in there, so you're going total compensation to total compensation, what is the gap? Because that might, for the board, say, look, we've heard from our employees, they were very vocal saying, protect ERFC, don't change our, you know, contribution amounts or don't take away employer contribution amounts. So, that's all fine. But in the end, every dollar matters and we don't want to lose employees. In fact, we were told a recruiting and retention aspect of being in Fairfax County schools is that we offer ERFC. But then, we don't reflect it in these salary scale charts. So, we have morale problems where people say, I'm working in Fairfax County and I'm losing X thousands of dollars a year by being here. But if you added the ERFC benefit in there, they would actually realize, I'm not losing that much, but I'm going to gain a whole lot more if I have my career here. So, we benefit ourselves and it helps us with the fiscal conversation. So, Ms. Michael, Ms. Quinn, it, do you understand, A, what I'm asking for, and B, is that something you can provide us with?
Yes, I understand that you would like us to update these graphs to include the impact of benefits.
We'll not update. I'd like a second set.
Correct.
So, go ahead and keep them like this when it's salary to salary. Then, let's do one when it's salary plus ERFC. And it's your sense that that's the only.
I'll put that down as a potential next step.
As a next step. So, it's your understanding that that's really the only differentiator between us. It's not healthcare benefits and things like that.
We're actually below some other jurisdictions when we look at our benefits for both health and life insurance, right? So, it's really the net combination. What pushes, pushes us to have higher value of benefits in terms of the employer costing is ERFC. Because without ERFC, again, in some cases, our health and our life insurance is below the market average.
Well, I'll leave it for our other colleagues to have this conversation together for the next step. We'll see if we want the chart to be total compensation or if we want it to be salary plus ERFC, you know, or maybe you do them both. But I, I do think it's important.
I think for clarity, when we've done them in the past, we have included total compensation. So, if we want to make sure that we're consistent with previous, we would want to include total compensation, not just ERFC.
Okay. So, I will just ask before my turn is up. Given that some of us have said this over and over again, why do we keep producing charts that are salary-only in a study that was a compensation study?
I think when you look at benefits, when we add the employer cost of benefits to the chart, right, one of the things is that's not always a good comparison, right, for employees. Just because the benefits cost the employer more or less doesn't always equate to the value of the benefit to the employee, right? So, for example, health, right? Maybe one jurisdiction's health, you know, costs more or less, but maybe they don't cover fertility benefits, which is really valuable to some employees. Or maybe they have a really high deductible, or maybe their spouse has health insurance and they don't need it, right? So, it's really, we think, right, what our employees initially look at is that salary level. We know that ERFC is a great recruitment tool and it's something that will really work, a retention tool, and something that we're really working on to become a recruitment tool, right? But employees don't tend to get into the, the actual long-term value of the benefit. So, when we just put the cost of the benefit, it's really influenced by, you know, is the jurisdiction fully covering the cost of that benefit? What's the employer portion of the cost? It's really more complicated.
I know, but Ms., but Ms. Michael, you know that by our choosing to stay committed to ERFC, and I certainly understand the tremendous value of ERFC, but it comes at a cost and in a vision of our size, if we don't incorporate that into the budget conversation and our, and our operating costs each year, we're basically leaving out for the board supervisors and the public to understand what is costing us so much that we can't match some of the other jurisdictions? Well, because we're also putting tens of millions of dollars into ERFC. So, I, I think in the end, we need to be doing that. And I'm, just going forward, if we don't start having charts that say that total compensation, it ends up looking like we, we only talk in ways we think that, you know.
Sure. One last point, if I can make it. Typically, the county, when they're doing all of their data analysis, they're looking at salaries as well. So, when they're looking at adjusting their salaries, they're graphing their salaries, looking at their salaries, they don't include the value of their benefits. So, certainly, as we look at that methodology, we just want to be clear that, you know, again, that they're being consistent in that comparison as well.
And see, that's an excellent point to be made because we tend to get scrutinized by the board supervisors and the public all the time about how we're spending our money, how we're doing our, and we've had citizens say, you guys aren't being transparent. You're not telling the whole picture. And yet, if we're doing exactly how the board supervisors does and the county does their comparisons, then that's what we should lead off with. Similar to the county, we do salary to salary. We recognize we have generous benefits, but that's not how the county does it because, and I'll close with this, Dr. Brae-Brown, the flip side of what I always say is, I'm a perfect middle child. I want things fair. So, if the board supervisors are making their, their salaries match the other region and that's how they're doing their salary increases, then that's how we do ours. And then, if it's a salary to salary and it turns out that in Fairfax County, we match salary to salary and, oh, by the way, then you have the extra benefit of an ERFC, well, that's fine because that's how the county's doing it. I don't want our employees short-changed any more than I know you and the rest of the board members. So, Ms. Michael, it'd be interesting, since they're having a, a benefits review by the board supervisors, maybe run the charts because I think it will help us having the joint board conversations of, hey, did you all happen to run it this way too on total compensation? But that, that is a powerful distinction for me just now, what you just said, which is, you're doing it this way for no other reason than that's how the county's doing it. And you're right, we need to be fair. If we're trying to match our salaries to the region, we do it through their approach.
Mrs. Strauss?
I think Dr. Brae-Brown wanted to speak first. I will yield to him first.
I beg your pardon. Go ahead, Dr. Brae-Brown.
Just a quick comment. We have under-marketed our ERFC. It is a huge asset that no one understands in the Commonwealth of Virginia or in Northern Virginia or in the DC metro area. I've talked already with some of the teacher associations, working with staff. We are going to have a robust marketing campaign to tell the story much more powerfully of not just what the costs are, and we can share that with you. It's really another line on the graph with 4% added, but also what the value is to a teacher who lives to 65 or 75 or 85, having all of that additional salary support over their lifetime. And we, we need to do a better job of it. And we've done some work on that, the ambassadors program, but there's far more to do. And I can tell you that our staff's excited. And having talked with teacher associations, they're excited. They want to be a part of that conversation. So, one, we need to, we've undervalued that and we need to market it better. I do think we need to, as we continue to try to enhance our own transparency and work together with the county, look at our, both systems through a salary perspective and through a salary plus retirement perspective. And it gets even a little bit more confusing because, what is it, a third of our employees, Ms. Quinn, are on the county system? Two-thirds are on our, our system. So, yes, and the county, the county system and the comparison I've already asked for is actually a little bit more generous than ours. So, partly, we need to tell our story better about ERFC. Partly, we need to have continued competitive salaries. One thing I want you guys to see out of this, this board to see out of this, this is a budget that focuses on salary for our employees, compensation for our employees, our teachers, our school-based, our support staff. There's no new programs in here. You want a streamlined strategic plan. And before I add anything to the budget on those areas, I want us to have gone through the collective discipline to see what are our key priorities? Are there reallocated resources within our budget that can fund those priorities before I ask for additional funding? So, this budget this year is focused on compensation for our employees. And I think if we put people first and then take a look at programs after we've gone through a defined process, we'll be in a better position to continue to get support from our community and from the, the board of supervisors. Thank you.
Mrs. Strauss?
Thank you. Okay. Going back and looking at Slides 17 and 18. On 17, you have total projected expenditures of 113.5 million and then the projected gap prior to county transfer increase. So, you have transfers and reserves. So, you subtracted out .9. And then, on Slide 18, you talked about beginning balance, state revenue, federal revenue, et cetera. So, in arriving at your 98.2 million dollar need in revenue.
We really want to go to Slide 4, which is going to show the change in each revenue category.
Okay. Hold on a second.
Right, for '19. When you look at those additional slides that you were referencing.
Right.
That's the upcoming, the out-years. So, both '18 and '19, look at the four years after FY '19.
Wait. Say that again? Look at the four years.
So, if we go to Slide 4.
Four.
That'll be the revenue changes we're forecasting for FY '19.
Right. Right. Exactly. So, we are.
Right. So, overall.
Funds available, 15.3 million.
Correct. Prior to any increase in the county transfer.
That's right.
And that's really the projected increase in state funding, right? It's a beginning of a biennium, right? So, we should see an increase in our state aid as well as we have a forecasted increase in sales tax of 2% on this slide. Those increases are combined with some other smaller increases and other revenue Fairfax City, right? But then, they're being offset by beginning balance funding, right? And remember, beginning balance is the one-time funding.
Right.
That we've been setting aside each year. We have, this current year's budget has a beginning balance of 33.5 million.
Right.
And at year-end, we only set aside 26 or 24.2 million.
Right. So, we had those less.
So, that's leaving us with that gap of 9.4 million. Now, certainly, you know, we'll continue to monitor our accounts and if there's any additional funding, you know, that we could save in this current year, it would come to the board as part of our mid-year budget review in December.
All right. So, all right. So, getting to the 98.2, you've taken the 15.3 out and that is already looking at a beginning balance that we created a smaller beginning balance. And if each 1% in the county transfer is 19.7, so then, we're back to, will they give us 2%? Will they give us 3%? Will they give us 1.5%? Okay. And there is no. And there is no other, and this, and I see sales tax, you've projected, one, two, three...
2% is the increase we're projecting in sales tax.
Okay.
Just like the county, we continue to closely monitor our sales tax projection, right? In the past, sales tax really was pretty stable. So, as we saw increases, they were really consistent month to month. We could do pretty good comparisons over time. And when we look at sales tax, though, we've seen more volatility, and we have, we're also closely watching, you know, how close sales tax comes to what the state projects. So, this is our preliminary projection for both state aid and sales tax. We won't know what the governor is including in his budget proposal for next year until late December.
It's, it's the first year of the biennium, so...
Correct. So, we should, we'll get an update on sales tax, state aid, as well as any change to our local composite index, our LCI, in December. And then the last thing, of course, related to that is, we'll also see if there are any impacts to our retirement rate, because that also has a huge expenditure impact.
And I'm assuming that any change at the federal level would not be reflected in the 2019 budget, because they always lag.
So, when we look at the federal budget, and we think of the changes in the federal budget, you're correct that they lag, but a majority of our federal revenue, with the exception of IDEA, Individuals with Disabilities with Education Act and Impact Aid, those are in our operating fund. But the other federal revenue, a lot of which we've heard about, is our title funding.
Yeah, Title I, Title II, Title III.
And all of that funding is in our grants and self-supporting programs fund.
Right.
Right? So, historically, as that funding has fluctuated, or went away, or been added, it's always been supplemental, and it's in that other fund. So, for example, if the Title II funding goes away, right, typically, we would then eliminate those expenditures that's related to that, you know, supplementary title funding.
Right. And I'm assuming that any of those increases are degre, particularly a decrease, because it's in the, in the grants fund, we don't supplant that. So, if it goes away, it goes away.
That is correct. Historically, when that funding has decreased or went away, we've ceased or decreased that activity.
And for all of the projects that would be funded through those title categories, if we did supplant and the money came back in, we would then, it would be, we would be disadvantaged and not able to take advantage of, of the new funding coming in.
Correct, absolutely.
And the same issue with Head Start.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mrs. Schultz?
Couple things. What's the operational cost for the retirement? 320 million?
You're thinking of retirement overall, I believe. So, give us just one second. We'll flip to that page.
It's 300 and some odd million, right? Oh, it's 400? I, I was thinking it's 380, but I was like, no, that's too high. So, I, I think that as we talk about efficiencies, we, we have to have, as an operational line item discussion, that when we have a quote-unquote $2.8 billion budget, take 400 million right off the top, because that's what it costs for us to fund out of our operations budget, retirement. Got to have that discussion to put things into perspective as we talk about things like, or I hope we talk about things like, are, are there things we're doing as a school slash education system that is not our area of expertise? Whether it's cleaning a building, whether it's driving a bus, whether it's mowing a lawn, whether it's a glazer installing windows, these are things that every time we talk about, well, this is our family, and we approach it with an emotional approach in terms of who's a county employee under FCPS, and who we spur jobs in private industry with, who do things like, you know, they don't serve, I forget how, what, what is our meal, something amazing, like 80,000 lunches a day, or something like that? People who serve, you know, 480,000 lunches a day. The, the, the scale of efficiencies that somebody that buys mustard for 480,000 lunches a day versus 80,000 lunches a day is far more impressive. And every individual that we include under the moniker of an FCPS employee, be it part-time or full-time, if they're included in benefits, is a part of a $400 million off the top. You know, it's like, I'm going in for a trim, and you know, zzz, you know, God bless you. It bothers me too.
You are correct when we look at retirement, that we do spend just under 400 million. I would, I would remind everyone, the state made substantial changes to the retirement benefits when they implemented the hybrid plan, right? And we should see that long-term impact to VRS rates in the upcoming years, just as this board, when you made changes to ERFC last year, right? We saw our first-year changes included in our FY18 budget, but we should also see, you know, a reduction in that annual cost for ERFC, you know, approximately, I think it was $16 million.
Is it going to 200 million?
Is...
You're, you're saying it's going to get better? It's not going to be 400 million?
No, no, it's, it's 400 million in our FY18 budget. What I'm saying is, when we look long-term, both the state in terms of VRS, and the school board in terms of ERFC, have made benefit changes to help mitigate the long-term cost impacts. It's just, just...
I'm talking, I'm talking sheer proportionality. I'm not talking about the nuances of the type of benefits we offer. I'm talking about the fact that we have a $400 million, and I don't want to say it's an albatross around our neck, because those are people's retirement benefits, but if we don't fundamentally approach the fact that we have, you know, 24,000 full-time employees and about another, I don't know, 14,000 or 16,000 part-time employees, many of whom receive benefits, that if you don't, if you don't...
Those benefits employees are a much smaller number, right? So, when we look at our part-time employees, or who you're considering part-time employees, I just don't want anyone to get the impression that they're 14,000 part-time employees getting retirement benefits.
That's why I said "some."
Right.
I use the qualifier, I use the qualifier "some."
Substantially lower than that number.
Some of whom receive benefits, that the, the operational understanding of the money that's available to quote-unquote "educate children" is not 2.8 billion divided by 189,000, or however many. You, you take a massive amount of money off the top, because we're funding long-term legacy costs. And therefore, when we talk about, you know, meddling around the edges of things like programmatic changes for efficiencies, now, it's one thing if you're talking, you know, programs that cost, I don't know, $121.7 million, for example, right off the top of my head. But you're never going to get there, you know, wheedling around the edges of, you know, the 10,000s, or even, you know, 50,000, 100,000, even, oh, we're going to make $250,000 change with, you know, upcoming organizational changes that you have in mind. That's not how you solve, you know, a $2.8 billion problem. And so, a, as we head into this budget cycle, there's been a lot of things that have been in the past, that have been put on the table as ideas, that I think we have to be open and willing to, from a business perspective, of looking at, look, right off the top, if you're going to start to work, you know, some miracles with getting money back into the classroom, you can start with the $400 million chunk first. And the way you do that is start to say, "Look, you plan now proactively, because whatever you're going to do now, you're solving a problem five years from now. You're not solving today's problem today, you're solving tomorrow's problem from today." And that is approaching long-term legacy costs for increasing numbers of employees, because our employee numbers are going up. And how do we find ways to do the education part as subject matter experts better by not doing the things that are not subject matter expert parts within our sphere of influence? And so, I, I'm, I'm asking that upfront. The other question I have is on the sales tax issue. This is something else that I brought up previously, is the reason, I believe, that we've seen a greater degree of fungibility around that and volatility in, in sales tax is because of online purchasing, because of the proclivity of somebody, instead of going to Walmart, Target, you know, wherever, you know, they're, they're, you know, they go here, they click on a thing, and it shows up, you know, that afternoon at their house by the time they get home. And, I mean, that's a miracle of, you know, of apps and, and delivery services and everything else, another reason why we should take advantage of, you know, some of the, the expertise that exists in the transportation industry outside of FCPS for efficiencies. But have we talked about ways to embark on accessing more of that online revenue that comes? And I'll grant it, you know, Amazon does these great programs, if your school signs up for it, and if your PTA advertises it, and if, 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 that they can get rebated back some of that money through their smile program, or whatever. But that's, that's the onesie-twosie approach, instead of being multi-discipline, multi, you know, systemic collaborative around solving a problem, which is accessing some of the money that's leaving Fairfax County as a result of the efficiencies that exist within retailing.
That, that is an issue that the state, right, is certainly in, in touch with, in terms of looking for ways, you know, to ensure they're collecting as much sales tax revenue as possible?
That, that's, that's, that's whatever the state's doing in terms of reflecting revenue. I'm talking about FCPS proactively working within itself to approach, get every single school signed up for a rebate program where people are shopping to get money back into schools that is disappearing off the county's revenue side and isn't therefore being transferred. And it leaves us, you know, you know, as my priest said, you know, "Hey, you know, sign up and electronically tell us how much you're going to give us, because, you know, we got to pay, we got to pay no matter what. We just don't know how much is coming in." Well, with the sales tax, what's happening is, that which was previously predictable, we, we could always really kind of narrow it down to about how much we were going to get. Lately, you know, we've, we've done the yo-yo on sales tax, and the reason why is because the money is leaving and going, you know, in, in other directions. And so, where is our systemic thought process around, "Look, there are programs available that will rebate money directly back into the schools that returns the money here, but we just, we don't, we sort of haven't, you know, glummed onto how to solve that problem here." I don't want to wait for the state. Wait for the state, you know, you're waiting on a tree that's not going to bear fruit, and certainly not in time, that, that we need it.
Other board members before I make a comment? Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Thank you very much, and thank you for giving us a heads-up on the forecast this early in the process. I think it will also be very helpful in the conversations tomorrow at the, with the joint session. I would like to just put something on the table now, which is that it sounds like we're going to have a budget shortfall again, and it sounds like it's going to be the same amount as we've dealt with year over year over year. And we have, for the past few years, brought out the same dusty old list of programs to cut. We can't keep doing that to ourselves, we can't keep doing that to our community. I would just urge Dr. Braybrand that we, before we start going after this funding, we have done that dive into the strategic plan, into the programs, and come back with a real thoughtful, strategic way of how we're going to address these issues. I don't want to gin up our music boosters and our AAP boosters and everybody else, just because they're going to see that number, and it's going to start creating angst in the community again.
Ms. Palchek?
A simple question related to what Ms. Corbett Sanders was saying. Is there, will we be getting an update on the Budget Task Force work soon? And do you foresee any of that being able to be implemented for next year? Is that a little bit more long-term right now?
I'm going to defer to our, our folks here. I know I was at the first one, and they've been meeting since. I don't know whether their timeline to be done will be in before we have to have our budget for this year done. So, let me see, Ms. Quinn?
I, I think getting anything from the Budget Task Force is going to be a little premature, because if you recall, we changed the process for the Budget Task Force. They're really reviewing a topic and diving into it in much more detail. So, they're just starting that work. So, I'm not sure if we're going to have anything for the FY19 proposed budget from the superintendent. Could they have something done by the time the board adopts it in May? Possible. But because they're only tackling one topic at a time, I'm not sure we're going to have a full list of recommendations from the Budget Task Force. I, I said, "I'm not sure." I know for sure we're not going to have a full list of recommendations from the Budget Task Force.
I understand, but do you, do you foresee possibly one of those topics or two will be tackled?
I, I think maybe by the time the board adopts it in May, not necessarily in time for the superintendent for his proposed budget.
Thank you.
I have a point of order. We got a, we have various proposed meetings on our calendars with the board of supervisors, and I don't know if that has all been corrected since various, because there is no meeting with the board of supervisors tomorrow. There is. And are we, are we supposed to be there?
Yes.
Oh, jeez.
But that, I think, it's listed as a, it's listed as a joint budget, but it's actually on the CIP.
Correct. So, tomorrow afternoon's meeting was related to the Joint Budget Work Group Plan that was developed, right? And you'll remember, that Joint Budget Work Plan had five elements in it.
Okay, so it is, all right, so it is the joint...
Tomorrow was the, correct. It's the discussion of the third element, which was looking for opportunities in our CIP.
Okay.
Right? So, the first meeting had to do with our budget timelines and where we had overlap. Our second meeting was shared services.
That's right.
Tomorrow's conversation is really about where do we have opportunities for joint planning in terms of our CIP.
And has, have the documents for that been posted?
They have not been posted, but later today, they'll be posted both on the county website and in board docs. So, we have a few other topics on that agenda that include some updates on previous joint discussions that the board has had, and then the main item is that CIP discussion.
And what time is that again, tomorrow at 3:00?
It's 3:00.
3:00, okay. Now, there's another one on our agendas, just as an FYI, that they're, that's their legislative. I know, and it's been, because we've had, had these other smaller planning meetings and keeping track of what's still there and what's not.
So, just to provide a little bit more clarity, the board of supervisors have their own legislative sessions and their budget sessions, but for the joint meeting, as Ms. Michael mentioned, we have one tomorrow at 3:00, that's related to the Joint Budget Work Group, which is just on CIP. You also have a joint meeting scheduled on October 31st to talk about legislative items in the morning at 10:00.
And then budget in the afternoon.
And then, again, another joint budget work group session in the afternoon. The first time that both boards will discuss any budget-related, specific to the forecast, will be in your joint meeting in November.
Okay. Thank you. Before I go to that... Before I go to that, I have a few questions myself. First of all, I, I will say, I, I do support your emphasis here on salaries. I think, you know, the board has said for some time that we've got to get those salaries up to market, and hopefully eventually beyond. So, I, I do support Dr. Braybrand's emphasis on, on getting those salaries up as our first priority. One of the things I do notice that, and as far as the, the issue of showing the comparison between salaries and salaries with benefits, I certainly don't mind getting both, but as one board member, I do want to see our comparison just salary to salary, because I, benefits are kind of a different animal, and mean different things to different people. And I do believe that a lot of people look at their salary. You know, "What's my salary? What's the salary if I go next door?" So, while I, I would be fine with, with two different charts, I don't want to lose the chart that shows me just salary to salary. One of the, the good things about this, at least, is we don't have this huge bill that we had, this increased bill for VRS. So, that's good that we finally got through that payback, or pay-up, or whatever we were doing for, since 2010. If I, the, on slide 17, if you go there, that 27 million for required expenditures, I believe last year, wasn't that about 56? Was that 50, was that 56?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's at least, at least we got a bit of a break on that, and that's good news that we've finally gotten out from under that. To the point about ERFC, I don't see anything in there, and I, I realize it was a small amount, but with what we did last year on ERFC, what are the projected... last year on ERFC, uh, what are the projected savings this coming fiscal year because of the changes we made in ERFC?
So the ERFC employer contribution rate is set for a two-year period.
Okay.
So we recognize those savings in year one, which is this current fiscal year FY18.
There'll be zero this coming year.
Right. We won't see another incremental change in that rate, but the recurring impact to the base is still there.
Okay.
Right? And then again, the changes that the board made to that benefit, we will see a substantial savings over time.
Over time.
Right. This was just the first year savings.
Okay. And then lastly, as far as my questions go, if you go to slide 20, um, so we're going to have to replace Ecart. Is that what that's telling me? System replacement Ecart? I, I thought Ecart was relative.
We have a number of major applications. Those are five of the, or six of the key ones that have current contracts that are about to expire, will be expiring in the next couple of years. So these are our major infrastructure existing systems that have, we've had for many, many years, in some cases upwards of 15 to 20 years, um, whose contracts have, we have finished not only the base contract, but all of the extensions to those contracts. And that's why they are up for, for renewal and reevaluation and going out to RFP process.
Well, approximately, what's the level of resources required for these replacements? This seems pretty substantial. Do we have a number?
Each one of these has a different potential cost associated with them. The library system, for example, is one that we are doing, and we have done, actually, it's already on the streets. We have issued an RFP jointly with the county government because we currently have the same vendor for the, for our library management system. And so we, um, are, it is actually there as Kristen can have. There's a summary of all of those system replacements all together. Um, but each one of these has a separate anticipated, but we won't know the exact dollar amounts until those RFPs and the vendors and the proposals have come back.
So I, I see now we, we do have, so these are the estimates, oh, well, for the next few years.
Correct. So when you look at our FY19 forecast, right, we're focused solely on employee compensation.
Right.
And these last slides in this presentation are really looking at FY20 and the out years.
All right.
So we know that we have identified needs, which are shown on the slide that you just mentioned, both in terms of system replacement, right, operations and infrastructure and then learning resources. So all of those are shown on the out years in this forecast, right? Because these are out years, we're really estimating what those amounts are going to be at this point, and we've grouped them by category. So when you look at system replacements, that's really kind of the impact of the systems that we project, that we may need to replace or else renew the contract, right? The same thing applies when we look at our learning resources, right? That's really learning resources materials, whether they be online textual or other instructional materials. And then lastly, you have operations and maintenance.
So staying with system replacements, once we get through those three fiscal years, have, have we gotten through?
That's what we're currently projecting through that. So these are incremental increases. So you need to add 1.5 million in 2020. You need to add another 5.2 in 2021 and an additional 4.7 the following. These are incremental increases.
Each of these systems would take multiple years to replace. So you may recall, we recently replaced our student information system and that took five years to replace because it is so integrated and so such a large mammoth system that's integrated with many other things. So these are multi-year replacement processes. What's just being done now is just the initial RFP process, just to get the planning started.
And then by 2023, we're expecting savings from having replaced them? Is that what that's telling me or no?
Because we just added incrementally. If you add all three of those numbers, 1.5, 5.2, 4.7, those are incremental increases that are now in the base. So we feel that by time 2023 and systems are in place.
We won't have to, okay.
We could actually realize some savings.
Okay. Well, that's something we'll, to look forward to. Um, and then la- lastly, I, it may, may or not, may or may not be a small point, but on operations and infrastructure, I'm not seeing turf fields in the list there. Have we included turf fields?
So if you remember, in our current budget, we included baseline funding for turf field replacement.
Oh, so that's in there.
And we believe the level of funding that we have is sustainable. And there's no year of year incremental change.
Okay. Very good. Um, so I, oh, Mr. Darren Kofax is a first time. So Mr. Darren Kofax, go ahead.
No, some of it's administrative. Um, can I ask Ms. Malburn too? Um, it's not clear on my calendar and I think I saw other faces. It wasn't clear. Um, we need to understand which of the meetings are joint meetings, um, and which are required. You know, we have some FYI meetings and, um, but I didn't clearly understand that this was a joint meeting where the, both boards were to, because it's just listed online as a budget committee meeting. I, oh.
It's not listed as a joint meeting?
So, no, it's, it's Joint Board Supervisor Budget Committee. But that wouldn't necessarily mean that all the whole board would have to come the way. It's just listed on my calendar. So if we can have some clarity on that, you know, joint school board, board of supervisors, budget committee, full board required, some, something in the notes section, that would be helpful. Okay? Because I, I don't have anything in my notes section that indicates that. And, and for the, also the October 31st one, um, I, I haven't checked my calendar yet to see that. Um, the other thing that we haven't mentioned in the fiscal forecast, and I appreciate Ms. Corbett Sanders advocacy. I think we're all kind of tired of the list. Um, but, um, there is a superintendent's budget advisory committee. And if you can, Dr. Braybrand, speak to a little bit about what there, what, what avenues you're focusing on and how that might play a role in this fiscal forecast.
Is that the same committee we're talking about? So this, this year, we went from, we're moving away from the list and we're taking an area of focus and the area of focus is, is special education, early childhood. And we're looking at that. If they get that work done, then we may look at other areas, um, for them to look at instead of a list. I don't want to go down a list either. Um, we've done enough cutting to classroom, class size, I can tell you that. We have an aggressive budget around compensation for our folks. We've talked with the county and I think they have compensation needs. I think this budget will rise or fall on compensation needs for our county and school system staff. Um, it is my intention and my hope that we will not get into a position where we're going to go and make cuts in our classroom or additional fees, um, to our students and parents. Um, but obviously this is September. One of the things that's different here, I'll be just candid, is that we're already having budget conversations just two months afterward. In some ways, maybe that's great. In some ways, um, there's a lot more information. There's a lot more variables that we need to really go through before we have final numbers. Um, but I agree, the, the list is not part of the committee this year and, and it's not something, uh, I, I think we need to, as an organization, go through some of the stuff that board members talked about today as a leadership team, looking, innovating with a lens to effectiveness to try to find new ways, are there new ways of doing things and thinking about things? Um, and not just another list to the community.
Right. And, and, and just to expand on that, I, I appreciate that. Um, one more question. Um, I, I don't know, because different superintendents have done it differently. When do you anticipate the work of that committee to be wrapped up? I know it's ongoing, but like, I mean, by the time he, will there be some preliminary report by the time Dr. Braybrand presents his proposed budget?
I don't believe so, because they're focused on one topic. Maybe that topic could be completed by the time, um, Dr. Braybrand presents his budget in January. I'm not sure because the, our start has been a little bit slower than we had anticipated. So I think we're still a few months out.
Okay.
But that report could be available before the board adopts in May, not necessarily for Dr. Braybrand.
Braybrand's first.
And then the task force will move on to the next topic after they complete this particular area of focus.
If we find estimated savings through that task force prior to the completion of our budget cycle, I'm certainly gonna bring it to the full board for review and inclusion in the budget.
Right. And, and I appreciate that. And, and I, I guess I, um, again, this is probably, you know, to leadership team as well as Dr. Braybrand. I, I think you're very astute in noting that some of the things we talked about today, some of the very specific issues, um, you know, with instructional services and newcomer students and what needs to be done. Um, we need to focus in on that compensation. We, as a board, have talked about that that's what we need to do. But we also, and I'm sure you will do this, but it's so imperative that we cuss that out because it's not that, part of the strategic plan and, and, you know, we've talked about it because this board was so excited about it. But part of the reason it is becoming a stagnant strategic plan because it has not been able to be funded in any manner. All of those ideas, they weren't just pie in the sky. They were like, this is what a forward-thinking school system should be doing. But we have not had any type of available monies to be, you know, at, at that level. I, we are still, you know, I always say that we are not unsuccessful. We are a very high-performing, wonderful school system. But we want to keep moving forward. And that strategic plan has not been able to be acted upon because of fiscal constraints for many year, for several, at least three years right now. And the budgets prior to that have not been, you know, appropriate either. Um, I, I mean, the funding for things. So we're doing the best that we can, but I, I am concerned about some of the topics we talked about this morning. And when we have a fiscal forecast with already such a huge projected deficit and, you know, our only, only thing we could, I, I say only, you know, I, you know, it's not the only thing. But we are at least, let's, let's turn it to a positive. We are at least continuing to commit to, um, bringing the salaries up to market scale with surrounding districts. I get that. But I do think when, um, you know, it's important that we understand it by not fully, by, by not being able to go beyond that, we are losing some things as a system.
Keys, Gamar?
Okay, so I actually am glad we're having this discussion earlier. And I was glad to hear you say, we, um, we've done the cuts and I've heard about these for many years and I've had parents freak out because they're afraid their favorite thing will leave, justifiably so. So I'm just wondering, can, since we're starting early, can we start looking at some of those new ways or setting up meetings that you're talking about so that we can actually have a, an effort in earnest to explore, uh, other avenues? The other thing that, um, I've been made aware of in my discussions, uh, in the, uh, with officials, both on the Board of Supervisors as well as state legislatures, uh, members, is that they have questions regarding our budget. And I, you know, for whatever that's worth, I'm not making a judgment. I think that perhaps we should just say, what are your questions now? Rather than waiting until we have to write a budget and approve it. Um, why can't we have those discussions now and make sure that we answer those questions and explore those new avenues?
Do you want us to respond to that?
Well, I'm not an expert yet on exactly how this joint budget thing works with the Board of Supervisors and the school board. I look forward to going and seeing what we can generate out of this, that joint discussion. Um, part of what I would tell you is, the streamlined strategic plan is gonna help us exert more internal discipline around our current resources and allocating them to what we believe are the key drivers to improve our school system. Um, we have a very good system. We want to be the premier school system in this country. We also need to be willing to think out of the box as much as possible and relook at past practices to see if there is a way to still maintain or even increase excellence while doing it in a more effective manner. I don't have the answers today. Um, but I will say I am very interested and more than willing to engage the board sooner rather than later to the budget process to the degree. In fact, my hope is over our three retreats coming up in September, October, November, begin to give you a taste of where I think, um, our priorities can be and how we would reallocate those. And maybe some efficiencies will come through there. Um, you know, I, my, again, two months is only X amount of time. I already, as you know, announced, uh, uh, on Friday, I'm very excited. Dr. Duran is here, who has been our chief academic officer, is now our chief academic and equity officer. And I'm very excited about the work that he can do. Um, as part of that, I'm not hiring an additional assistant superintendent that's in the budget. Some may think, well, you know, why are you doing that? I think, um, we don't need an additional assistant superintendent to do that work. We have people underneath Dr. Duran who need to put an equity lens on the current work that they are doing. So I know that's one thing and one small little $250,000 isn't going to, but the more we put that lens on multiple things, I think there's a possibility to, um, continue to find innovative ways that can help us do the things that we want to do. But as soon as I have those, I will be sure to bring them to this board.
Finished, Ms. Keys, Gamar?
All right. That all sounds good. Um, I just know in my discussions, a number of questions come up. And I'd like to make sure that we try to answer those questions or address those questions as early as possible so that it doesn't end up just creating a hardened attitude that suggests, well, you know, there's this problem or that problem. And oftentimes it's purely perception. But I'd hate for it to hurt, um, the way we move forward.
Well, I will say this. I understand, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, that were 200 questions last year around the budget. We've got to figure out a better way to communicate our budget to the greater community. Because if there's that many questions, that already tells me somehow that there's not a full understanding of the budget the way it's being conveyed. Um, what you're gonna learn about me is I'm a complete straight shooter and complete transparent person. I don't have the answers today. If I did, I'd already tell you. But when I do, or when we have something that I can provide, what I can tell you after two, two months, and what I hope you take away from this budget is, I believe the work the board has done around a market-based study of salary is the right work. And we need to go ahead and accelerate and get it done. Our teachers are the number one indicator of a quality school system and they're underpaid relative to the market. We need to speed it up. There's not a single additional dollar I'm putting on here for programs this year and it's intentional. I told leadership team, it didn't just happen to get moved to 2020. I told folks, I'm not willing to put forth a budget with more stuff until we look at what we currently have and streamline it. So I think that work is actually going to give us the discipline that we need and the, the lens that we need to, um, maybe find some efficiencies and effectiveness ways that we haven't looked at before. Um, and when I, when I have those and know what they look like, um, you know, I'll, I'll let you know. If there are key questions right now, I guess, Karen, I would say too, among any of the board members, let's go ahead and, uh, you know, forward them on to me and maybe I can get ahead of this so that the budget, when I present it, answers the questions upfront, um, instead of waiting till afterward. And, um, you know, you all really can help me this year make sure the first budget that I present to you is done in the format that you want. If you've been frustrated about a way of budget, and some of you've already shared that, by the way. But if you haven't shared it yet, things that you're looking to see more of in the budget, let me know upfront so that in January, when it's presented, it addresses some of your concerns. We've got to have transparency and trust in the budget process if we're going to hope to get additional dollars from our board of supervisors in front of our, from our community. So I certainly want to help and do that.
Yeah. And, and I agree with your focus on, I, I think we have to take care of our employees or we, we simply cannot do our job. I also think, and I'm not, I don't have, I have the luxury of being an outsider right now. So I want to benefit, well, I think I get to decide what I am. But, um, I, I, I have the luxury of not having been through those processes. And so I can say, just from what I've heard, people have questions. And I'm not saying they're, they're right or wrong. I think that they're perceptions. And I think that it would benefit us to address those. I'm hearing you saying that you're willing to do that. I'm on board with you and I want to help, uh, uh, address those. But I'd like to do it sooner rather than later.
All right. I have one go back and then we can, I believe, go to next steps. Ms. McLaughlin?
So, um, in the spirit of clarity on what tomorrow is, I will offer my humble suggestion because I've listened to it every single year. And I frankly think that there's a point to it. On this, on the chart, um, guess the slide where it shows our 98.2 projected gap? Um, and the key little phrase inside there is prior to county transfer increase, the supervisors don't like it. Because the reason they went to multi-year budgeting is to say, we... we do our budget fiscal forecast, we look at what we think we're going to be having, and that's where we need to begin our conversation. So while I understand that we don't know what that transfer in reserves will be, I have sat next to enough supervisors by now who have grumbled and grumbled and pointed the finger at the elected school board members and said, why do you let them do that every year? Because that $98 million, I've been listening to everybody, nobody even questioned it. It's not going to be 98 million by a long shot because we don't even have, how much did they transfer to us last year? Was it over $50 million?
It was 53 million.
Okay, so you guys, take $53 million off that number right now. That is a much more manageable number for us to then start working on. But when we do that, they feel, and I'm not saying they're accurate, but perception is reality to people, right? They think we're playing them and we're playing the public and we're playing Chicken Little again. And I'm, I really can't understand the rationale. And, uh, it, it backfires on us every single year. Ed Long and whoever now is the, uh, the interim right now, they've told us what they estimate right now. And so we should put it up there with an asterisk. And then at that point, we can say to them, if this is what you're projected to give us, this is what our delta is going to be.
So this year, for the first time, they didn't actually give us any type of guidance. What they said was that they should provide equitable increases consistent with available resources, which is what they did last year, and that this approach should be continued in the formation of the FY '19 budget. So this year, they didn't give us any type of clear guidance of a specific percentage, just that we use the same methodology of sharing the available resources.
Well, what I remember, when I remember Ed Long saying is that he would be doing the fiscal forecasting and he would say, we expect that revenue will grow by 2%. And that we typically get about 52% of the revenue growth and the county gets 48 or whatever. So, so having zero is just not helping us, is my, my point.
So we will see in that late November meeting when both boards are together. That's when they're going to share with us their revenue forecast for next year. I also would anticipate that just like us, they are, they too are going to show a gap, right? Because the first process in the fiscal forecast is really for both organizations to show their need. Right? So when you look back, even when they were doing their multi-year budget, they were showing a gap, right? So I do expect them to also continue to show a gap at that November meeting.
So for tomorrow, it's, and we should actually, I would-
For tomorrow, I, I now have the agenda, right? The first thing on the agenda is a five-minute update regarding school bus cameras. The second is an update on gang and opioids, right? Presented by the county staff, they had included funding as part of their final budget review, which they call carryover, for some support for gangs and opioids. So they'll present that tomorrow as well. Then we'll get an update on workforce development. That's a follow-up from our previous joint budget meeting where they talked about workforce. Um, if you remember, they had individuals from the Northern Virginia Community College there. We'll also get an update on One Fairfax. They've been doing individual meetings with board members, so they'll provide us an update there. And then the last thing on the agenda with the most time is again, that joint budget work group. It's task number three, County and School Capital Improvement Program, looking for opportunities, right, where we could collaborate in the future on our CIPs to better serve our overall shared constituents.
So tomorrow, you're not presenting what we're looking at right now?
Absolutely not. The next time we will talk technical budget with the county is in that meeting at the very end of November.
Well, then that's, that's the good news because I, I will strongly encourage you guys, and I mean superintendent and leadership team, do not allow this school system to walk in and already invite the ire of the board supervisors. Get on the same page with the county executive. By the time November rolls around, if there, this is what they're projecting, that they think that the revenue is going to be and what they think they're going to be potentially directing toward the schools, consider putting it in that, that projected transfers amount. Because, uh, some very influential board supervisors, I sit next to them every time and they get so upset about this. And they've, I don't think you guys are doing anything bad, but they don't like it anymore. They're tired of it. So show whatever direction the county executive is. Dr. Brabran is saying he's going to hopefully meet with, whether it's the interim county executive, whoever becomes the new county executive, but have those dialogues in advance and it might head off the, you're playing public fear.
I, I think Ms. Michael tried to explain this earlier. They don't currently have all of their revenue projections.
I heard that, Ms. Quinn. I heard it's just going to be November, right?
No, they won't have it in November either. They only have the numbers that they shared probably last year. They're not going to update their revenue projections probably until December or January. So they're going to do their best to give you what their revenue, um, projections are. The county will also reflect, they'll show you the revenue numbers, but they're also going to reflect what the needs are for the county. And we know they will also show a great gap. So we're really just showing what our needs are for the school system in November. So we will also show a gap, let's just say if the revenue doesn't grow more than 2%. The county will reflect the 2% increase, schools will show the 2% increase. But they're, because they're going to show their expenditure needs, they will also show a gap at the end of the day in November. In November is to reflect what your needs are for the coming year, not necessarily to see how we're going to balance the budget, because there are opportunities where there could be increased revenue.
I, I would just recommend that we tend to get criticized, and I mean we, the entire school system. So ideally, I'm, I'm encouraging you all, get on the same page with this county staff so that preemptively, when you present, say, after we've consulted extensively with county employee, with the county staff on this one and the county executive, we are not showing our projected transfer on here because we're trying to do an apples to apples. Here's our need over last year, here's their need over last year. At least then it takes the narrative off of some of them of, there's the schools again, creating this inflamed fear of a big massive gap. So that, that's the piece I'm saying is if we would coordinate better, just like the earlier conversation on salaries. If they're only doing salary, salary, that's what we do. But we have to communicate that upfront because we're the ones that get scrutinized. The other thing is to the 200-plus budget questions you all received, I've shared this with, um, Ms. Quinn and Ms. Michael. I respect our board supervisors and their very extensive individual staff they, they all have in their offices. We don't have that. So when 12 school board members have budget questions, ours need to be a priority. And, you know, we need to explain to the supervisors, we want to be transparent. But it's my understanding that many questions come over from the board supervisors and their staff. And you combine that with 12 elected school board members' questions. It's, and then the public's questions, it's just a lot on staff. And I think we need to figure out, while you've got the time, what makes sense so that, you know, the finance office, is it spending all their time answering questions as opposed to figuring out how we're going to close gaps? And then finally, I'm going to just gently push on this one as I've shared before. I'm married to someone on a corporate leadership team. And every year, they find themselves having to figure out, how do you close budget gaps? And I had this debate with another one of my colleagues who's not here, so I want to make sure everyone hears me. I know we're not a corporation, but we are similar to a nonprofit. And nonprofits face the same challenges we do. You don't always have the revenue you want. In the end of the day, we've been doing it on, as you know, cutting compensation or increasing class size. Sometimes even the nonprofits have to make some choices in saying, out of 24,000 employees, we might have to shed 20 positions. We might have to shed 30 positions. Again, I don't know what that number would be. Maybe it's only going to be five. But every time, as you know, Dr. Brabran, it's usually cut the, the increase to employees and sometimes cost of living is, is all they're getting, and that's still crucial. But when we say not cutting programs, when 85% or more of your operations is people, people run programs. So it doesn't have to necessarily be that we've, that we're eliminating a program, but we might be saying, how can we be more efficient in how we deliver this service? Um, I don't, I don't take lightly people losing their jobs. But nonprofit sector, the federal government sector, everyone has to deal with it at some point. And not giving raises to the people who are, who are, we are essential. We can't keep them if we don't give them the compensation that we're striving towards. So I just put that as one other thing that we have to be thinking about.
Okay, thank you. Uh, you, board members will see that, um, Ms. Malberg has sent the agenda for tomorrow now. Uh, Ms. Michael, you just sent it to, to Eileen and, and so we, we all have it. And when we get the link to the documents, you'll send that out to, to the full board, hopefully.
Yes, we will forward that to the entire board.
To Tammy's point, um, um, Eileen, perhaps what we need to do, I was going, I don't know if that was considered a next step, but perhaps we should just ask our EAs to differentiate on our calendars between a board of supervisors meeting that, that's an FYI or something that we're invited to, but, but not really participating in versus things that, that we're actually expected to, to be there and, and participate in. Yes, okay, so, so we'll take care of that for, for the future. Um, and I have, uh, Mr. McAlveen.
Yeah, so I had the same issue that Tammy and Sandy raised about that being differentiated on the calendar because I certainly was not planning to be there. And at this point, I don't, I can't reschedule things to be there. So, um, that's unfortunate. Hopefully many of us are not in that same situation.
We'll explain that there was a-
So on that same issue, Kristen and Eileen, I appreciate you sending out this, um, unfortunate display of an agenda that, um, curiously is not budget-related, um, the vast majority of it. Um, and so my question for our chair, for Dr. Brabran, for staff is who, who actually dictated this agenda? Did we have any buy-in into this agenda? And how is this a joint meeting if we did not have any sort of buy-in into this agenda?
Well, we've, we've, it's been an interesting journey. I was a little surprised myself. I am not prepared to do a presentation on one of the items. We'll have staff do that. It was, it was, there, it, I know, I think Ms. Evans was on, it's sort of this planning thing last year. And we, we did meet with the board of supervisors, so there's an update on-
So we'll, it's been, it's been a develop, it's been a development in process. Last year, the chair and the budget chair, um, started down this road. And then this year, uh, Janie and I met.
Did have one meeting.
We met, when was it?
Last week.
And then, uh, but we had left it, I believe, with county staff to send us documents and, uh, and a final agenda. And so this is, uh, getting pretty darned close to, so we had, we have been involved.
Okay, can I ask a more specific question perhaps to Mr. Plattenberg? Were you prepared to present on bus cameras tomorrow?
Well, the discussion, um, that we had in the initial, the meeting that was being talked about, um, last week, we were talking about not, um, really being prepared to have a full discussion uh, because of the concerns that some individuals have regarding those bus cameras. And, uh, the supervisor member who was there, Mr. McKay, Supervisor McKay, said, well, because it was on the agenda, it was a draft, and because some people in the community may have seen it, he preferred to keep it on there. So he could address something along the lines of, we know we have two boards, governing bodies, that we have not spoken together about this. We have additional work to do. And so he wanted to give an update. I then asked him, I thought that might be a perfect time for him to introduce and boast about our extended stop arm and the successes we've been having for that, so that it would acknowledge to the community that we haven't been just sitting around. They were always continuously looking for safety for students. Um, but that was the context of the conversation. And I didn't know what was on the agenda until we received it here, but that was the draft conversation that we had in that meeting.
Well, um, my advocacy at this point is, you know, I think this is disgusting, what they have done, um, without any consultation with us. Um, and I would tell the chair that, um, perhaps you say, because this was billed as a budget work session, we, we go in and talk about budget, nothing beyond that. Um, and to ask you or other members of our staff or board to present on these topics at this point, um, is reprehensible.
But we did, we, we, we did take, there was one meeting that was taken off the calendar because there was a discussion of the number of things. And I also did raise the issue that, um, many of our members work full-time and it's very difficult to have routine, a lot of these daytime meetings, so. But that's okay. I will be there tomorrow. I know some of our staff will be there.
Absolutely, and I truly apologize for the confusion. When we first had both boards adopt that joint budget work group plan that had the five tasks in it, we had like kind of placeholder dates. So that original document said that both boards would get together in September to discuss Task Three CIP. Just like on that document, you'll see that the legislative item was slated for October. So I definitely know we've had confusions on, on the dates and I sincerely apologize for that. And, and, and hopefully, even for tomorrow, we can clarify these dates and then really work to come up with language so we can understand what's part of the joint budget work plan and really what's a budget discussion.
That's right, because that was one of the things that I had asked, is the expectation for the entire school board to be at the table to discuss? Because I did indicate, it's very hard for us to do this often because of people's work schedule. We have one board member today who had to work too. So there will be a small grouping of us there tomorrow. Do the best we can.
Uh, Ms. Corbin Sanders?
I echo Mr. McAlveen's concerns because as I look at this agenda and the reference that some in the community may have seen it because a draft agenda was released uh, or available to the community, I would like to have clarification as to who in the community might have seen the draft in advance of, um, their colleagues on the school board.
Right. This draft agenda was only shared at the advanced meeting we had prior to the joint meeting tomorrow, which included the school board and the board of supervisors, chair and budget chair. The actual agenda itself has only been seen by the staff that have been working on these individual presentations and those select board members. I, I believe he was referring to the community has asked the board of supervisors about an update for the stop-arm camera, but this agenda hasn't been shared with anyone else.
Because my concern is when I look at this list and then I look at the fact that tomorrow, um, there is going to be a very small subset of this board at the meeting, that if they are intending to have some sort of agreement on any of these issues, then I don't know where they're going to get the agreement. They'll be getting the agreement by individual board members and not a whole board. Additionally, I'm a little bit concerned that on the workforce development discussion, which looks like a powerful discussion, uh, it's absent our own CTE staff from Fairfax County Public Schools. And the significant amount of work that we have been doing on workforce development with our academy programs and other programs, um, will not be reflected in this presentation.
I think the work's been done jointly. Francisco, remind, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe our CTE staff has been involved with the county staff on the work. I believe they could not make it tomorrow, so the presentation is going to be made by the county staff. But the work itself was done jointly.
That is correct. There have been ongoing meetings with them on that. I don't know the intricacies of the presentation, but I do know for the gang and opiate, there have been our staff as well from special services, meeting with the county. So the, actually, I believe that, I don't know, I don't remember at the end how many recommendations, but I know a couple of the recommendations are directly from our staff. That will be highlighted tomorrow in the gang opiate piece. The One Fairfax piece was asked to be put on there by Chairman Bolova just to give an update on where we are. No discussions, no decisions, no, um, coming to, uh, an agreement. Because actually the next, basically what it will be saying is how it will go to work session and moving forward on the county side. So it's really not any substantive discussion on that particular agenda item.
So, Dr. Duran, you're saying that there is going to be some recommendations put forth for both, um, Agenda Items Two and Three?
I don't have it in front of me, so I'm going to look at Two and Three, but-
Those would be the gang and opiate?
The gang and opiate, yes, they do have some carryover funds that they were, had left over and they wanted to make some recommendations into how to use that. For example, one that comes top of my head, uh, they had $22,000 to allocate over to our unification program so that we would be able to increase that budget and use that money for our unification program. That was a request from our staff in terms of that. So there are a couple of pieces in that one. I don't know specifically the workforce development part as much, I don't know specifically the workforce development part as much, but the gang and opiate, yes, they do have carryover funding that they are intending to discuss.
The board of supervisors actually approved their carryover package last week and they wanted to take advantage of the opportunity with both boards being, boards being together to provide an update. It was a topic at your last joint meeting and now that they've allocated funding as part of their carryover budget, they just wanted to provide an update.
So it would be helpful for those of us that are either preparing for tomorrow's meeting or to, those that are not going to be able to attend it, if those recommendations for each of the items on the agenda could be sent around this evening so that we can at least weigh in with our colleagues about any concerns or applause that we might have on each of the items.
Ms. Anna Kopeck?
Just, and I'm not, I, I don't think anybody here is at fault. What I think needs to happen is, we need to ensure when, and this is just from my previous experience in the past few years, when you walk away from a joint planning meeting, that the agenda is decided there, because it looks like the agenda was decided after the meeting. And, and also, I mean, there was a, and I think that, that's not right, particularly the first item. The first item in particular was brought up by that particular board of supervisors member and said, we had conversations with the board, there were no conversations with anyone on this board about that topic. We talked about that meeting, I don't know, when was it, Mr. Plattenberg? April, May? It was quite a long time ago and there were very specific reasons and it was in a closed session meeting. And there were no public discussions about that. So I, I don't think these joint, these joint meetings are meant to be a positive thing, not something where special interests or special boardman, you know, should, should put these things out there. I understand about, I, I appreciate the One Fairfax policy update if we want to talk about that, but some of the other ones seem like we are, we, while we might have worked behind the scenes, clearly, we don't feel that there's a partnership in putting this final schedule together. And I think that's not the best way to start the new year or one of these, you know, these joint, I mean, the title is a Joint Budget Committee Meeting, and then there's, you know, four other topics which are, are differing. And particularly, so, you know, to our, to our curtain chair and budget chair, you know, just no blame at all, just, just saying, I, I would, my suggestion would be to walk out of those, those preparation meetings with a finalized agenda.
Let me speak to that, point well taken. We met with them Thursday.
Okay.
And they had a draft there. We left that meeting saying that they were going to, I believe their staff was going to pull together what they wanted to do and get it out to us. It's unfortunate that it wasn't before the weekend rather than after the weekend, but I know they're, they're jammed up too. The school bus cameras, that was originally scheduled for 20 minutes, I believe. They decided after hearing from us that they actually need a legal briefing on this.
Okay.
And so the five minutes may not even be five minutes, it may be one minute, to say that they're, they're going to get a legal briefing and, and until they do, we can't really discuss it. The gang and opiate point, as Ms. Michael said, or perhaps Ms. Quinn, they put money in there for it and they want to tell us what they're going to do with it, basically. You know, that's not on our side, so they're going to brief us on what they want to do. One Fairfax, we need to discuss that and then, and then capital improvements. So we probably should have not waited for county staff to come back to us. Mrs. Strauss and I probably should have sent an email out saying, you know, we're going to get something soon.
Yeah, it's on our calendar, but I guess I was a little, I, I expected to see some more documentation, but anyway, yes, it's, we've been, we've, we've received the advice to probably get the documentation and the links so that everyone is real clear as to what is going to be. Because again, it was my understanding that the only, the only substantive piece for the board to actually be at the table with was the CIP issue.
And we need, and so the documentation is going to show things from their side and things from our side, correct? So, so the CIP presentation is really going to talk a little bit about some of the shared capital work that we're currently doing.
Long-term, long, very long-term planning.
And then what we could do long-term planning, where there might be opportunities within our CIP and county CIP, where there could be some shared work within the two CIPs. So it really is a long-term planning meeting and see if there's some agreement between the two boards about how to go about that work within the CIP documents.
But I apologize, there seemed to be no links to any documents for anyone to read.
I believe we are still waiting for the county to post the documents and as soon as they get posted, we'll go ahead and share it with the board. I'm sorry.
Ms. Anna Kopeck, did you have anything more? Okay. So with that, I think we're about ready to conclude. Do we have next steps? I, I think we may have had one from Ms. McLaughlin. Oh, okay, provides, oh, there it is. Does that capture what you were asking for?
Ms. Michael?
It's not, but it wasn't just ERFC.
Yeah, I recall you said the preference would be that we would have a second set of graphs, it's going to just show total compensation.
Correct. In order to make sure they align with all the information presented previously, we really want to have total compensation in one set of graphs to go with these salary graphs.
Okay. But ERFC is considered total compensation. Yep. Okay.
Okay, so let's take a look at this.
I did have a second suggestion.
Oh, you did? Well, let's, let's look at this one first and see.
Well, yeah, it wasn't captured.
Or is it, is it?
That one's fine, but I had, that one works fine.
Is it connected to this one or is it, it's a separate one?
No, it was a second.
Okay. So how many people can support asking staff to set, give a second set of graphs and I, just say, I'm, I'll support this because, as long as we keep the first set of graphs in there. So how many can support doing that?
Total compensation.
Okay, that's a majority. So what was your second one?
Oh, I was just requesting that the superintendent and finance team work with the county executive and their finance team on preparing apples-to-apples in the November budget presentation so that if they're, you know, just showing need and not projected revenue, that will hopefully put everybody on the same page and I think limit unfair criticism being directed at our staff and/or the system as a whole.
And when you, when you say apples-to-apples, you're talking specifically about the revenue gap? Was that the, no?
I, I, I mean, I didn't really mean to have her saying apples-to-apples, I work with the county exec and, and, and staff.
You want us to use a similar approach to identifying major cost drivers? So our presentations are similar?
Similar, yeah, budget presentation, you know, for the, for fiscal 19 budget presentation, yeah.
So cost, cost drivers?
Not necessarily to identify major cost drivers, I just want you to use a similar approach to presenting your fiscal...
Identifying the needs, so when they're including their compensation need, we'll include our compensation need. If they're including some other strategic needs, we...
It, it sounds like on this one, I haven't been through it yet, that we look like the bad guys, that's what you're saying, Megan? We come with this ask and the county already has their stuff already sort of nicely arranged and then we ask for this ask that's going to blow up what's being proposed. I mean, I don't know yet. I mean, it sounds like we both want to share our needs, the county and the school system.
Right.
And then go, wow, that's a lot of need, hmm, what's our revenue picture going to look like? And whether the county executive is ready to say, hmm, I'm going to propose something different in my budget to deal with this revenue piece.
If, yeah, if you, if, Ms. Michael, if you look behind there and see if that's, that, that makes sense. My goal is again, is to help, help you and help our staff, you know, get clarity from where the county executive and their team, how they plan to present it. And then when you're doing the same thing, the beauty is, you almost get the protection of saying, like county staff, we have our presentation that outlines the similar challenges we'll be facing for FY19. And then that way, it'll enable the, us as board members to also push back on any criticism and saying, well, our people did just what your people did.
Okay, so, so does that capture it, Megan?
Yes.
Okay, so can I just see a show of hands, how many can support asking for that to work with the county executive? All right, so we'll, we'll do that. So this work session is completed, will take three minutes, and then our last work session of the day is on...